Tonight, six p.m., Council considers it not convenient to, uh, regular council meetings. Tonight's vacation will be given by Jean Anderson from Dubic and Telford.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we exalt you and we thank you. And we ask you, oh Lord, that your presence be here, that you would guide and direct. We thank you, Father, for those you put an authority over us and those governing bodies that you've empowered. We ask you, oh God, to give wisdom, give direction, give your guidance and your blessing here. And Father, we thank you. We thank you for this city, Denison, that we live in. And we ask you, oh God, to improve and restore and renew and empower and all the things that you would do to make this a great city that will glorify you in all your ways. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number three, consent agenda. Actually, I'll make you clear who our presentation is here. Chief Birch?
He remembers you. I'm with his toy.
If he sits down by you, we got a problem. Mayor and Council, happy to introduce you to our newest officer, Officer Ibar. Belgian Malinois is a little over your old. There's Officer William Daring or K-9 Howard. They just completed training and got their certifications last week.
Well, we can have you.
And they're about to be a regular presence out on the streets. I think they'll go a long way in helping our efforts in drug interdiction and criminal apprehension. And we're also, even though we're going to have a little more formal media event this coming Friday, I also want to thank the Citizens Alumni Association, Citizens and Shametman Alumni Association, who were behind the drive to fund the city getting this great dog. And they put a ton of effort into it. And we'll be speaking more on that later. Anyway, do you have any questions for Officer Daring?
Yes.
Really just want to thank you for getting extra training and certainly thank the Alumni Association for funding this. This is a vital tool, I think, to what you guys do every day and can help your efforts. And I really, really appreciate it.
Great.
Do you have any questions about what he knows or?
I guess you're going to take your show on the road and go to schools and get out at, you know, fall festivals and just have great some awareness.
Correct. Yeah, that's the one good thing about him, he's a research consultant. So there's no problems there. And so I'll get to some of the schools and talk to the kids, talk like that, show them to the kids, just interact and then get out on the street and hopefully help out there too.
Fantastic.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You feeding him?
Yes, yes.
That's a little skinny.
That's just, that's just breed. They're so active that I feed them six cups a day and also two cups of wet food. And that's just, that's just this breed, they're so active.
I wish I had that for him. He eats too much. If you don't know that, he looks like.
But, but he's a pup, so hopefully he won't fill out. I hope he gets about eighty, eighty-five pounds. He's at fifty-five right now, so.
How old is he?
A year and four months. Could be a year and five months in just a couple of days. He's from Europe, so that's where we got him from.
Is he a shepherd or is he?
He's a Belgian Malinois.
How much training did he receive?
He received eight weeks before I got there and then another four on top with me. So altogether, he's had twelve there, but we'll do continuous training every month. The minimum, eight, eight hours. It'll probably be more than that off of getting started. And then he'll go, just watch weight.
Can he stand up on his own?
He'd feel a lot better.
Question, if he gets on the arm, like?
He was just spanked very well. Hey, los, los, good. Si, off, off. So, you know, he's well behaved, he knows his soap up, but he'll get better when he gets older. I really feel sorry for the guy.
How long ago has it been since we, we had a K-9 unit in Denison?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, he's been.
Twenty. Fantastic.
Twelve years.
So, and we can be young, hopefully you can have a little also. It's the whole. I feel sorry for the guy that steals garden hose. I'd make him, be your best friend.
Thank you for coming out today.
Got you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three, consent agenda. Have a motion from Councilman Spindel, second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor, say aye. Those like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item four, public carrying, secure report on Chief Billings officials on United States structures.
Mayor, tonight we have three buildings that we want to bring to you to consider for demolition. This is a map of those, those areas where those three buildings are located. First building is 715 West Pond. See, this building is not, not level. You can also see portions of the siding are missing, which caused the building not to be able to shed water properly. You also have portions of the building on top that are missing. Elements of it that do allow rain are lost, built within the building as well. And this was an open area of building. Here's another picture of this building. You can see the siding is, is used for brick and plywood, it's not contaminated, which is in very bad condition. As you see in the last picture, they've actually used wrong roofing for portions of the siding in the building. So based on those conditions, the fact that the building is not shedding water and allows rain, there are other elements that enter into it. It's not straight, it's not plumb, dark. There appear to be structural conditions. We're recommending that you approve demolition of this building. Second building is at 3811 Potswell Road. Not much of a building here. There's no roof, just a few walls. This is how the picture of it, windows are missing. You can see portions of the roof here, but obviously they're not in too good a shape. So based on the fact that it won't shed water, it's structurally inadequate because portion, what holds the walls together and keeps them from falling here around is the roof system that supports it. That doesn't exist in this condition. The last one is at 4504 South Highway 75, which is also Texas River Parkway. Sometimes they call it Highway 75, sometimes it's called Texas River Parkway. This is a frontal picture of this building. You can see that this building is in disrepair as well. The siding is not in very good shape. The windows are open, the doors are open, so it's open for, it's not insecure. We can have children, vagrants inside the building very easily. There's another window that's open in the back of the building. You can see there's no door there. The windows are open above on the second, not the area above that door. And then there's already been some type of graffiti on the wall. Based on that, those conditions, the fact that we, the building is out there and it is deteriorating, we are recommending that you approve demolition of that one as well.
This is a public carrying, is there anyone here who should speak to any of these properties? There being none, the public carrying is closed. Questions from council?
I have one on the one on Highway 75 this last week. Is that still in a residential? Is this still zone residential or has any of the zoning been changed out there? My question for that, is it a commercial property? I didn't know where this sits on the Highway 91 or the map.
Yeah.
Commercial property, simple and tabloid, not more than being placed in a commercial property.
And most of, most of those properties are either zone commercial or light industrial. Waiting for the zoning man to come out and tell you exactly what the zoning is on that, but I would say it's one of those.
Probably.
So according to Chief, kind of I think where Councilman Spindel's going there, can the motion simply reflect a little, if you're leaning on a specific one?
Mr. Mayor, in the past, we use the use of the property, not the zoning.
Okay.
What leans on it? We did one on Armstrong across from Craft Creek Furniture. There's a residential house there and it's a, in a commercial. And the decision was to choose the use of the property, not the zoning of the property. But if you wanted to lean on it, the other.
But I think probably more where you're going is that where it's, what it's going to be.
Right, it is, you know, I mean, we got a better chance of recovering our funds with this piece of property and one there than we do our real estate where everybody's getting those little money, get something built on.
Yeah, we can certainly do that as council, if you'd like to link place one, you can place it in.
Dennis, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Make the motion to approve the demolition of these leased properties. In addition to that, is actually looking at placing a lien on the highway 91 or Highway 75.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Spindel, second from Councilman Brawley, all in favor, by saying aye. Those like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Agenda item five A, make your report, take action on the property standards.
Mayor and Council, tonight we want to give you an update on what's happening with Area Two. As you know, Area One was a pretty good success. What we found with Area Two was that there were a lot more properties that were demolished. And so we'll give you those in a week tonight. The green area is the area that we worked on this past year, this area. It is, as you may recall, there were twenty-five properties in Area One. What we found in Area Two was that there were a hundred and twenty-five, so five times the number. Of those a hundred and twenty-five properties, eighty-eight we received voluntary compliance on those properties. Thirteen applied for financial assistance, and we are working on those, trying to work out the issues of the, of the financial assistance. Those people, when they applied for that, we froze their condition and no other action was taken. Ten have completed less than thirty percent of the work. There's five that have completed greater than seventy-five percent of the work. We have five that, that have completed somewhere between forty and seventy-five percent of the work. Four did receive financial aid for painting windows, et cetera. Two were, we were unable to contact the property owners. We have two that are scheduled for demolition. As, as a total, there were twenty-five citations that we ended up issuing over the course of the past year. Now, just to kind of give you an update on, a reminder on how we're doing this, we send out one notice, we give them forty days. If they don't contact us or do any work, then we send a second notice. We give them another twenty days. And usually there's a couple of weeks that go by between the time the forty days elapse and we get out to inspect it and we send the second letter. So they end up with, with usually about seventy-five days. Once that, the second notice comes up, we give them, that time runs out, then what we do is, if we haven't seen any changes in the property, we can't contact them, they're not talking with us, then we'll issue a citation. If they're making any effort at all to work on the property, we're seeing any type of changes on the property, then we're giving them extensions. So that's how we've been working this. The result, we had seventy point four percent compliance out of those hundred and twenty-five houses. So what did those changes look like? I've got a few of these, I'll show you real quickly. This is one of the houses before and after. This is another house before, actually it's garage, before and after. See quite a bit of difference. Here's another house that was before and after. Here's another one that's before and after. Another one that was before and after. And this one's quite a bit of change as well. This one turned out real nice. They did a really good job on that one. And this one, we still have the silver in the windows, but they did a really good job of repainting and cleaning the place up. Here is one of the biggest changes that we saw right here. So we felt like that it was a really good success. We, we made a lot of changes or we saw a lot of changes that we made. And people really seemed like they didn't just want to do the minimum. When they went back and, and did this, they, they ended up going back, as you'll see on this house, they added the stars on it, which obviously wasn't a requirement, they just needed a paint. And they really, I think, once people began to see the changes that occurred in their homes, they wanted to go a little further. And we, we were really encouraged by what we saw. So basically, what we're doing is, we're, we're prepared to proceed on with Area Three. And I know two areas that we've talked about is the Cuthbert Edition, which is north of Martin Luther King, west of Munson Park. Another one is parent to other states. And we're asking for direction from council on which area to start for Area Three, and we'll begin on that in the next couple of weeks.
Well, let me first just, just commend you and your team for, and the citizens for those results. So that, that's impressive. And to know that seventy-one percent, I think voluntary compliance, again speaks to the program and the approach that the city has and you and your team have on how they're approaching these, these homeowners. It's obviously worth it and I think we're kudos for another fantastic phase. Just as I've thought about these two potential sites, just as, as we discussed and council gives direction tonight, I mean, my preference, I think, would be the one north of Martin Luther King, closer to the park. One, because the park is utilized, not just by people that live in those areas, but people all over town that utilize that for pony baseball, also the frisbee golf's out there, some walking throw. And I think it just has the higher impact than, than the one that's out of parent estates at this point. Obviously, both are necessary and needed, but my preference would be okay at this point.
Dale, do we have any early data that shows what we'd need or any homes we'd need at parent estate or are we, are we?
No, we haven't, we haven't gone out and surveyed any of these. That's the first thing we do, is much we identify.
Mayor, I, I want to echo the mayor's comments. I think the program has been, has been really successful. And I, I too am very proud of the citizens who, who brought their house and clients. And I know, I'm certainly as guilty as anybody, sometimes I know there's something that needs to be done and, you know, we kind of, kind of put it off, put it off. And sometimes we need that little nudge to, you know, to get started on something. So these folks have done a wonderful job and I'm sure they're very proud of what they've done. And that's kind of what homeownership, that's, that's one of the things about it that's so nice. I want to echo the comments, and, you know, as we are, obviously we have scarce resources as far as being able to do these. One of the things I do like about the, you know, the area around Munson Park is that also too, from, from a city staff standpoint, I feel like we could probably handle that a lot easier. Parent estates is, is a pretty good, pretty good drive out there. So I like, I think we could probably tackle this one, you know, with a little bit better speed and be able to cover that territory a little quickly. So, you know, I've, I would lean more toward that as well.
Dale, do you have any idea what the average repair cost of the, varies in intensity of what they need done, but what the homeowner's actions spending on the subject?
No, I really don't. We didn't go back and ask any of them what they spent. Most of it, from what you can see on this particular house, most of it's paint. And we could buy, paints twenty dollars a gallon, buy twenty gallons for four hundred dollars and buy a few supplies, so maybe five hundred dollars and buy a couple of stars, maybe, maybe they're forty dollars a piece, so six hundred dollars is all that they spent if they did work themselves.
And honestly, what it inspired from the landscaping perspective, just to get those old, old front bushes out and just.
Just want to make the labor special.
They have to do buildings, obviously.
Yeah.
Garages and buildings, whatever we do, they have to build buildings.
This curve is not net.
Yeah. Okay. You don't need a motion, I think you got the direction right.
Okay.
Thank you, Dale.
Agenda item five B, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor. We have before denied as the final project plan, the reinvestment zone financing plan for tax increment reinvestment zone number one. As you know, the city's worked with TPJ Properties over the last several years to create an economic development agreement and help accelerate the development at the 691 75. And tonight will be really the conclusion of those efforts. The tax increment reinvestment zone number one, it's a phased development. It's planned and from day one, we talked about this being a phased development, so that you see that bear fruit. Phase one identifies seven point one million dollars in public improvements that'll be reimbursed to the developer up to one hundred percent over the life of the terrors. I say up to one hundred percent because either the, the terrors repays the developer one hundred percent of those costs in thirty years, or at the end of thirty years, you stop making payments. So if he gets it all done in a thirty-year period of time, great. Doesn't, then whatever he got that thirty-year period is what he gets. Total private investments anticipated to be a hundred and fourteen point five million dollars for phase one over the thirty-year lifespan of the zone. Phase one would require the city and the county to deposit their required increments in the TIF for thirty years or until the fund reimburses the developer one hundred percent of phase one costs, whichever happens first. Again, phase one costs were seven point, seven point one million, private interest was a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and fourteen. We've met numerous executive sessions, several open sessions to discuss this matter. I think council has a fairly good understanding of the project plan, financing plan. Mr. Klein is here, if you have detailed questions that staff can't answer. Staff does recommend approval. Council has a couple of alternatives listed in your backup, but staff's recommending approval tonight.
Okay, questions from council?
These are the exact projects for, for the community of the city, Dennis, without only a motion to approve.
Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Brawley, all in favor, by saying aye. Those like sign. Motion carries, five C, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor. Now we're coming to the point where we're asking council to look at the reimbursement agreement and the development agreement for the zone. Not to perjure to take the financial data, but the, this is where the heavy lifting occurs for this, this agreement. And this is where the increments are defined at forty percent of the city's MNO rate, which is our non-debt service rate. So RINS rates protected, it's shielded from, from the zone. The same thing goes for the county. The county's contributing fifty percent of their general front rate, which excludes any debt service tied to their tax rate, which is a conservative, prudent approach, I think, to doing this. For that, the developers obligated to submit a plan development zoning district within a year. And they're making the promise of inputting a hundred and fourteen million dollars in private improvements. If they don't have it, they don't do a dollar. The plan development will come to the zoning commission, D and Z, will come to council for approval, final approval. So we will have, we can, if we want to see powder coated street lights with gold bangles, that we can require powder coated street lights with gold bangles. We have that level of control over this. What I have seen from the developer is promising in the meeting we had last week. So I'm confident that when it comes to finally negotiating this final part of this agreement from the zoning standpoint, we'll all be in agreement. Again, the council retains final approval. It is a thirty-year pri, a thirty-year zone. If we pay off sooner than that thirty years, then, then the board and the council can collapse the zone. But we do have to meet our obligation. But any obligation we get into goes back to, has to have council approval to begin with. This initial project plan is being approved tonight, so that phase one does have approval. But before he can construct phase one, he's got to submit a concept plan that, that's tied into his potential PD. And again, that will have council approval. So we'll be able to see things before we finally have to write the checks. With that, again, Mr. Klein's here, if you have detailed questions about the agreement as well as Julie Ford and Courtney as well. It's going to be very similar to the Schuler concept of what this is. It's just not quite as, as integrated as the Schuler development was.
Questions from council?
Quick motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Spindel, all in favor, by saying aye. Those like sign. Motion carries, five B, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the participation agreement that's going to allow the county to participate in the terrors. It did go to the commissioner's court last Friday and was approved and is waiting council approval tonight. And it will be, have, will be done at that point in time in this section of it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. That concludes the staff's report.
Again, just want to take this opportunity to thank Judge Bynum and the commissioner's court for participating in this. It helps spread the burden with another entity and helps the velocity of the development as well as allows for some county improvements on both 691 and Oylake Road. So really win-win for, for all entities.
Quick motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Brawley, all in favor, by saying aye. Those like sign. Motion carries, five E, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the final lineup tonight. This is the actual ordinance. There are a couple of changes to the ordinance. And I appreciate your patience with this. As late as yesterday afternoon at 5:00 p.m., there's an email shot across the wire about this ordinance. Everybody's, everybody's on the same page. It's just, there was some discussion of whether we were going to amend the boundaries of the zone or not. It concluded that we are going to amend the boundaries of the zone. So the ordinance in your packet that was handed to the DAS is the ordinance we're asking council to adopt. I'll go through the change, I'll go through the changes that are being made in the ordinance from the original one that was passed back to December 12. The first is section three that's being amended, and that, that's the number of members of the board who's on the board. The developer has requested that they be allowed to have a member on the board, which would be very similar to what Schuler, Schuler has. And Mr. Brawley, it is the first item in your packet. I'll go down the front page, we're talking about this first paragraph in bold. The board has five members, council appoints four, and the county appoints one. So the developer's asking that he get to identify who one of the four council appointments are. It's not uncommon, it's a very common feature, and again, it's something that we have to show the development. So the staff is asking the council to consider that, that, that item. The other amendment is defined in section four of the ordinance, it actually amends section five. And that changes the term of, of the ordinance. And that, that term is that the zone should. And that, that term is that the zone shall take effect on January first, twenty twelve. That termination of the zone shall occur on the earlier December thirty-fifth date. One, or at such time as all project costs have been reimbursed in tax increment bonds, if any, and the interest they're on have been paid in full. The, what that basically means is, and how that differs from the original version is that the, the council will retain the right to cancel this whenever they want it to. Developer needs certainty. If, if we've gotten to this point, we maintain that in the original one because we went on a bit of a gambling expedition with this at a time when usually passed. Didn't have the details. Didn't have the information on what this zone might, might be doing from a project standpoint, other than some preliminary information. We have more certainty now. Our staff is comfortable recommending that be replaced with more traditional term language, which basically sets the affect date at the same time it was and allows termination to take place the earlier of the, of the thirty-year, thirty-year date of the conclusion of the turs or at such time as, as the obligations are paid off. The only other amendment is the boundaries. We are increasing the boundaries since this ordinance is required. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Julie Ford and Courtney are both here as well.
Questions from council?
Make a motion to approve the amendments and ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Brawley. I'll, if ever I say aye.
Aye.
Vote like aye. Just want to take this opportunity to thank Julie Ford and Anna and Courtney, all staff that participated in this. Again, this development on six ninety-one and seventy-five is paramount to the median growth of Dennis. We heavily incentivize it for that very reason. And we know its importance and it's actually an opportunity to start increasing our, our retail sales tax base that, that again allows people other than Dennis and residents to burden the, the cost of services in the city when we're able to generate additional retail sales. So I applaud this council and several previous councils for the work on that order. And now we're ready for the developer to do, do their part. Time is six thirty-two, and the council now convenes to executive session to signify an attorney regarding Congress Tillman. Also to discuss personnel matters, student check five five one dot zero seven four, Texas government code regarding goals and limitations to the city attorney. I'm appointing a member of the civil service commission regarding economic development. We will not be discussing that in executive session. So time is six thirty-three. Ann Ridge, we'll go to yours first.